I would like to call the meeting to order if we could all stand for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance is sealed in the blood of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Justin Rock.
Here.
David Glade. Green Deter is absent, excused. Nicole Howard.
Here.
Molly King.
Here.
Mary Ann Niesner.
Here.
Denise Wheeler is absent, excused.
Thank you. Agenda approval. Sorry, I have a lot on my desk this evening.
There are no changes to this agenda?
Thank you, Robert. Consent agenda, has anybody seen any item that needs to be more discussed, or do we have a motion?
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. At this time, we will invite public comments. Please keep your testimony to three minutes, and anybody that would like to speak on a non-agenda item, this is the time.
Thank you, I didn't see a sign up, so.
Brent Clapp is bringing something for you to write your name and address on. Thank you.
Okay, I'll do that after I say. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, city councilors, everyone. My name is Will Anderson. I moved with my wife and two small daughters to LaGrande from Hermiston about 18 months ago, and we love all the things this town has to offer. In particular, we think LaGrande has great potential for walkability and bikeability. The four of us try to commute and run errands by foot or by bike as much as possible, even year-round. We do our best to seek out and use the quietest streets, of course, and existing sidewalks, which is kind of a challenge. It's a little bit piecemeal out there. And of course, gaps and sidewalks and traffic are always unavoidable, obviously. But we generally find it's faster to bike or walk the three-quarters of a mile or so to downtown from our house up near the middle school in Central than it is to warm up the car, drive it downtown, find a parking spot, and then walk to whatever shop we're getting to. So I just walked here tonight, took me 12 minutes, it was great. If you can walk three laps around a high school track, you can get to town. Of course, you know, we're not naive, we know there are inherent risks when you're moving around to town on a bicycle or walking. But I'm here tonight just to bring attention to two intersections where I really think pedestrian safety could be addressed. The first one is Washington and Sixth, that's the intersection at Site A and the post office. That's in the Presbyterian and the Baptist Church. This intersection, I think, is dangerous for pedestrians in its current form, particularly from eastbound traffic on Washington when you're trying to cross south on the west crosswalk. They can't see you until you're halfway into the road, basically. It's especially bad at night. We've experienced a couple of near misses, we've seen a near miss on that same crosswalk, and it's just kind of a dodgy sort of intersection, we think. I wrote Kyle Carpenter and Robert Strode about this, Robert Strope, excuse me. Kyle noted in his reply that other folks have called attention to this intersection, not just us. Apparently, O-Tech is looking into upgrading the existing lighting to LED lights to help increase illumination, which is a good start. Still, I've asked that it be added as an agenda item to next week's Parking Traffic Safety Street Maintenance Commission meeting. Hope I got all that right. The second intersection, which is a little closer to home, literally, for me, we live on H Avenue. Second Street and H Avenue, that's the main intersection with all the drop-off and the pick-off and the turnarounds at Central Elementary. I think it's probably a known intersection to some folks, especially those with kids. Specifically, the northeast corner of the intersection, and I have a couple of little simple maps here, so we can all make sense of this afterwards. I'll just hand it out, so you have it for your review. The northeast corner, it's missing a curb ramp and a short piece of sidewalk at the corner. A Safe Routes to School report from four years ago identified the ramp as an issue, and we would love to get this added to the PTSS MAC meeting as an agenda item also. We see a lot of people walking in the streets there, and we'd like to get them, help get them off. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Will, can I ask a question, or no?
Yeah.
Did you submit both of those issues to, okay, you've got, perfect. I just want to make sure that there was a through line.
Yep, thank you.
Good evening, LaGrande City Council, I'm Brent Clapp, and I'm going to be running for Union County Commissioner, position number three. And just want to make you aware of that, some of you already know, you've addressed me, and I appreciate your encouragement. I'm running as a businessman. I'm not a politician, so I'm a little antsy waiting into this, but I feel like it's a natural extension of my investment in LaGrande and Union County and the leadership that I've shown in a number of different places. And I'm excited to be a part of this, so thank you very much. If they have any questions, you can check out brentforunioncounty.com on all of the social media platforms and on a website. I really want to hear what the concerns of the citizens of Union County are, and particularly if there are things that they think the commissioners should be doing that they're not able to do within their power, which is a very, there's a lot of frustration out there, a lot of people who are aggravated with whatever's going on. But when I ask them, well, what can be done locally, there aren't as many options, and so that's my focus. I want to look at what can be done locally, and I think part of it is, is that if there's something that's frustrating us, I at least want to sit down, get the people and the leadership together, and talk about it. I'm a little, when it comes to like the issues with our drugs and so on and so forth, Measure 110, we were at a point where we can't do nothing. And that's kind of the place where I'm pretty good at asking questions of leadership and digging in until I at least have some question, whether it's the one, some answer, whether it's the one I want or not. So thank you, appreciate your support.
Thank you, Brett. Any more public comment? Nope. All right, we will move into public hearings. Looks like we only have one public hearing. Mr. Boquist.
Just making sure there's no rules of order.
I didn't see any.
It's a reso, so there's not. So this request before you is an annexation of 25 properties. This is a topic we discussed in a work session in October, and that work session focused on annexation of all properties within our urban growth boundary that might be eligible for annexation. And the properties before you tonight are ones that you specifically directed staff to bring to you first, which are properties that have city water and/or sewer service and where they have signed consent to annexation agreements. And so the decision before you tonight essentially is to honor those agreements, because it is possible to annex them at this point, and our intent is, once it becomes possible, that we would move forward with that action. And that's the understanding that we provide property owners when they ask for services, and we have them do an agreement, and they're not able to annex, that they're advised that when it becomes possible, it would be our expectation and intent that we would do that. So anyway, the time has come for several properties, and those are the ones that are before you, there's 25. All but one of these are on the north side, one is on the south side, at the south end of Oak. And all of these have been broke up into nine areas, and mostly that's just for the ease of trying to write legal descriptions and deal with the resolutions for doing these in logical chunks. We, in your packet, you do have placeholders in your version of the legal descriptions in each one of the resolutions. We do have those completed, and so the signed, all but one, so we have the signed. The copy that you will be signing for 1 through 7 and number 9 have the legal description plugged into that finished copy. The legal description for number, for Area 8 is still being worked on, and that will be done soon. We checked with our legal counsel today and everything else in the resolution, because we've listed the properties, we have a map that identifies which properties they are. He felt it was perfectly fine that we adopt the resolution tonight, knowing that we're going to be plugging in that legal description to finalize that after the adoption, which is just a minor amendment in this scenario. And so that's the direction we were provided, so I guess the recommendation that staff has for you this evening would be to approve all nine of the annexations, and we kind of structured it in a manner for one motion and then nine separate readings, just to kind of make it easier for procedural issues. And do you have any questions about any of the areas of the process, or?
Did you send letters to everybody that this was going to happen tonight?
Yes, so in the middle of December, we sent letters to all, there's actually 24 property owners, there's 25 properties, because one owner owns two. But, so we sent letters along with a copy of the agreement and the map, and so all of them have been fully aware that tonight is the night for this item. We have talked with a couple of those folks, and as well as a number of other folks that, I don't know if you saw the media announcement that went out today, but anyway, but there was a media announcement, so we talked to a number of other folks in the urban growth boundary that were worried that they might be one of the 25 properties, and so we were able to kind of assure them that they were not. But anyway, yes, we did send letters out, and related to that, you did ask that I send letters out to a number of other folks too in advance and invite them to annex, and we have not done that yet. So I've been kind of waiting until after this process ends tonight, and we move forward with this. I do have a letter drafted, and it's a little difficult, because I'm also waiting for some information from our finance department on which ones have water and which ones have sewer service, because I've kind of created a table, kind of a finance table, that identifies what is estimated with property tax and water and sewer rates, and what is their annual cost out of pocket today versus after annexation. And it's a nice piece of information to have for those folks when they call up and say, what, is this going to be a benefit to me or not? It's going to be the same, and then I can give them at least as close as our guess is of how much of an increase are you looking at, or how much of a decrease, because we do have a number of properties that will actually see a savings, because their assessed value is low enough that doing the switch over by going from a double water sewer rate to a single rate, they're actually going to save money rather than see the increase. And so, so anyway, having that information completed, so I'm still waiting on some details for that, but that's part of the delay in not sending invite letters out. But that will be coming.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions you have? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. This time I'd like to invite testimony. There is done. Counselor discussion.
Well, it seems to me like if, nobody is complaining, nobody is, they seem to be agreeing with us on this, right? I mean, from the ones that you talked to, and if they haven't come forward, I would assume they are in agreement.
Yeah, so I have, so I've only talked to two property owners out of these 24 owners. One of them was not excited, but he understood, you know, I have an agreement, and the time has come, and it just is what it is. The other property owner was not thrilled, and they felt that this was a process that we were forcing on them, related to, similar to the times we've gone through to the voters, and they failed. And he was interested, why are we doing this now? And so anyway, yeah, so I did respond, and I kind of identified the agreement and the process that we're going through. And I haven't heard back, but anyways, but I've had two properties, one's not thrilled, and the other one's kind of so-so, but other than that, I haven't heard from any of the other 22.
Okay, sounds good.
But they also had a signed agreement that when this day comes, that they would be joining the City of LaGrande, correct?
Yes, and part of the, I think part of the frustration for this individual was that their agreement was signed by a prior owner. And it is a recorded agreement, it runs with the property, it comes up in title searches, so they are made aware of it when you transfer, but that was part of the frustration, is that this is not an agreement that I signed, and therefore, why am I being held accountable for this agreement? So that's, that was part of the frustration, but anyway, I kind of responded to that as best as I could, but it's, you know, it is a recorded agreement that this is a deal that was made in order to get water and sewer services, it was a promise made, and it's time to satisfy that commitment.
Do you feel that they're not being, it's not being explained when they buy their house?
I don't know. I think that those things are explained, I don't know if they're explained to the detail. I just know that when folks go through a refi, I mean, I've done it a number of times. So I know, like, when I've refinanced or purchased, there's a lot of paperwork right there, you know, there's a lot of things, and it's overwhelming to kind of go through that process and spend time with every single document. So some things that maybe don't catch your attention, you just go, okay, and that might be one of those, kind of like CCNRs. That's a lot of, a lot of times, that also just kind of is one of those things, folks go, oh, okay, so that's with it too, that's not a big deal. You know, and so, and then they sign stuff, and not really realizing all of the things that are involved. But the information is there, they are provided it, and there is an opportunity for folks to learn that. But I think that's kind of a flaw in the property sale process of, sometimes people don't do their due diligence.
Thanks, Mike.
Motion.
Can, I just ask, Robert, we need to take these area by area, or can I make a motion to do all the areas?
Each one has to be, has to be read individually, so it's a single motion to approve all of the resolutions, so they'll be read by title only, and then there'll be a separate vote on each area.
Okay.
If they were not done by resolution, we would be able to do them all as one.
Okay.
But because they have to be individually read, that's why it's structured this way. But we did do it, so you don't have to make a separate motion for each one.
So I'll make the one overarching motion, to, that the proposed resolutions annexing properties within areas 1 through 9, each be read by title only, put to a vote, and passed.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All right, you ready, Stacy?
I am.
Can you read the Area 1 proposed resolution by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annex to the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically properties located within Area 1 in Township 2 South, Range 38 East, Section 31 DD, Tax Lot 700 and 1200, and all of the adjacent Third Street right-of-way extending north from Lake Avenue and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right. Could you read the Area 2 proposed resolution by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annex to the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically properties located within area two in township three south, range 38 east, section 05 AB, tax lots 12, 2300, 3500, 3602, 3607, 3610, 3611, and 3701, and all of the adjacent Maple Street and Russell Avenue right of way extending to the intersection of Maple Street and Russell Avenue, and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Nope. Could you read area three proposed resolution by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annex to the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically properties located within area three in township three south, range 38 east, section 05 AB, tax lots 3,000 and 3,200, and all of the adjacent North Maple Street right of way extending from Z Avenue north to the south boundary of tax lot 3,500, and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Nope. Could you read area four proposed resolution by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annex to the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically properties located within area four in township three south, range 38 east, section 05 AB, tax lots 3,900 and 3,902, and all of the adjacent North Pine Street right of way extending south to Z Avenue, and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Could you read area five proposed resolution by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annex to the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically properties located within area five in township three south, range 38 east, section 05 AB, tax lots 4,300, 4,400, and 4,401, and all of the adjacent Russell Avenue extending west from Interstate 84 to the east boundary of area two, and all of North Cherry Street right of way extending north to Interstate 84, and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Could you read area six proposed resolution by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annex to the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically properties located within area six in township three south, range 38 east, section 05 AB, tax lots 5,000 and 5,001, and all of the adjacent North Cherry Street right of way extending from Z Avenue and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Could you read area seven proposed resolution by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annex to the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically properties located within area seven in township three south, range 38 east, section 05 AA, tax lots 1,800, 1,805, 1,806, and 1,901, and all of North Cherry Street right of way extending south from annexation area five to annexation area six, and all of the adjacent Z Avenue right of way extending east from North Cherry Street, and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could you read area eight proposed resolution by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annex to the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically property located within area eight in township three south, range 38 east, section 5 DB, tax lot 100, and all of the adjacent V Avenue right of way extending west to the existing LaGrande city limits boundary, and all of the adjacent North Willow Street right of way, and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could you read the area nine proposed resolution by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annex to the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically property located at 80 Oak Street within area nine in township three south, range 38 east, section 18, tax lot 500.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we are done. Good job.
I haven't even raised now.
All right, we do not have any unfinished, unfinished business, new business. First one is resolution adopting the City of LaGrande natural hazardous mitigation plan. Kyle.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, councilors. This action is to adopt the City of LaGrande natural hazard mitigation plan in as the official plan for the City of LaGrande. So, natural hazard mitigation is a process which identifies possible natural hazards that could occur here in the city. It identifies the plans and the actions that we can take to help limit injuries or damage to personal property. We were previously covered under a multi-jurisdictional plan that was put together by, I think it was eight eastern Oregon counties and covered all the cities and the counties. That expired in 2019. Union County has put together their own natural hazard mitigation plan, which initially we thought we would be covered under, but working with FEMA, they had indicated no to qualify for most of our programs, you're going to need your own. So we were able to qualify for a grant and take advantage of some state funding that was put aside for this process. We did talk about this back in March of going through this process. So this has been a nine-month process that was undertaken by city staff and some, some other local partners that all came together to put together the plan. We came up with the plan, we've submitted it to FEMA and actually, I think it was four days ago, we received our letter from FEMA that pre-approves our plan with the only remaining hurdle to adopt it through this res, or through this resolution. So be happy to answer any questions, but by passing this resolution, we'll adopt the plan, we'll send that resolution to FEMA, and we will officially be able to acquire funds that we were not.
So this unlocks funds that wouldn't be available if we were under the umbrella of the county, but were something to happen, one presumes we're still in the county, we would also be able to take advantage of county funds? So it's sort of double insurance.
I don't know that we would be able to take advantage of county funds, it would depend upon what the emergency was and how that was done, whether or not funds would be specifically allocated to us, if that makes sense.
I mean, your answer makes sense, the logic of the rule does not make sense. Because then counties would just blot out entire cities with no coverage, which I would certainly want to do if I was a county and had a city in it, it's, but yes, thank you. It's really weird.
Thank you, Kyle.
No problem.
At this time, we would like to invite public comments. Counselor discussion.
Do we have to match the funds at all then?
Depends on the program, but most of the programs that we qualified for, the, the real push was a program that Stu qualified for, we've got some funding to work on, some of the stuff a bit more, the protection for in case of a dam breach. Other programs we're interested in, one's called flood mitigation assistance that we're trying to tap into to replace the culvert over there on 18th Street that tends to back up. That one I think is 25% match, but if they're going to pay 75% or three quarters of a million, I'll be more than happy to take their money.
You have the funds.
We, we have funds ready to go, we've been saving for that bridge for a while, but if we can divert most of those funds to another one of our problems, sounds great.
I agree. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Motion?
You have to, are you going to ask her to read it by?
No.
I'm on the wrong one anyway.
I move that the proposed resolution adopting the City of LaGrande natural hazards mitigation plan be read by title only, put to a vote and passed.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any additional discussion? This time, the city recorder read proposed resolution by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, adopting the City of LaGrande natural hazards mitigation plan.
That one was short. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, moving on. Awarding a contract for analysis and establishment of system development charges. Mr. Kyle.
This action form is to award the contract for system development charges. So we did have a work session talking about the establishment of system and development charges, which is basically a buy-in for the different programs we have for the city of, or the different, different services we offer for the City of LaGrande. We have transportation, stormwater, sanitary sewer water, and even the idea of rolling our existing SDC with parks into the idea so that we have a consistent methodology throughout. So the consultant would be hired to come in, analyze our system and our future project lists, go through the methodologies, and then come and present to you to show the different options we have for the adoption of an SDC. From that, you would give direction on which direction we wanted to go, they would help us to pick, put together the official documents for adoption, and also provide us with the tools to recalculate the SDC, which has to be done on an annual basis, with the idea that staff would be able to do that rather than hiring a consultant every year to reanalyze those. We did put out RFP, we received only one person who was able to provide the services we were looking for. There's a few other organizations that do this type of work, they just didn't have the time to submit something. So luckily, the one who did submit was the one who attended our work session. The proposal they submitted covered everything we were asking for within what we had allotted for the budget for this item, and be happy to answer any questions you have about the process or action.
Is there a timeline on the conclusion yet?
Their timeline, we, we were trying to get to be complete by July 1st so that in the new budget year, we could kind of move on to update the ordinances and adopt the SDCs into those ordinances. Usually when we do ordinance and resolution updates, when it comes to at least water and sewer, we try to do those right after a new budget year. So on their early timelines, they're looking at trying to be done on that as long as we can afford the contract mid-January.
All right, thank you, Kyle.
Yep.
Public comments? There are none. Counselor discussion. Motion?
I move that we award the LaGrande systems development chart, charges and analysis and establish con, establishment contract to the FCS group and with the, with the available funding and authorize the city manager to finalize and sign all required documents.
Have a motion in a second, any more discussion? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, our next one is considering ratifying counselor, board, committee, and commission assignments for calendar year 2024. So each January, councilors are provided with a list of boards and commissions and committees established by other agencies to which the council are appointed as city representatives. Councilors prioritize and submit to the mayor their preferences and representative or alternatives to the boards, commissions, and committees. These choices are afforded to me prior to the evening session and determine the selection. So with that, I will go through and read what I got. So this will be for 2024 City of LaGrande counselor committee assessments. Assignments, there we go, sorry. First one is chamber of conference board directors. This one, the main representative will be Molly King. Myself will be the alternative. Counselor audit committee, this one will be David Glabes, which his term will expire on the end of 2024. Nicole Howard will be the other one that'll be appointed. And then that's a two-year term, is that correct, Robert?
Yes.
I'm a second on that, not a backup if David goes down. Is that correct?
It actually shows both are representatives.
There are two.
Yeah, there's two on this one.
Yeah, for, for that one.
Good try though, Nicole.
I was, something about me going down.
So hoping.
Yeah, the auditor will reach out to you as representatives of the council prior to the audit starting.
So we take that meeting instead of the whole?
Well, the audit report will come to the entire council, but typically the audit committee is consulted in advance.
Okay.
The next one will be the Northeast Oregon Housing Authority Board of Directors. With this one, it's a four-year appointment. Mary Ann, her term ends 2025, so she will be the representative, and David Glabes will be the alternative. Union County Airport Commission, on this one, the representative will be David Glabes, alternative will be Corinne Dudo. Union County Safe Committee is Coalition, the representative will be Corinne Dudo, and I will be the alternative. Union County Senior Counsel will be Ms. Mary Ann Meesner, alternative will be Denise Willer. Union County Tourism Promotion Advisory Committee will be Nicole Howard, and alternative will be Mayor Molly King. Do I need to, on this one, do we need to do?
You don't need a motion.
Perfect.
Steve, you're okay with the three? You're okay with the three? We need that a lot.
They're very good with what I, so that's, I tried to make sure that nobody was overwhelmed on some of these, they're only like one-time meetings. All right, now to the, the fun one. I messed this up last year, but I think I'm prepared hopefully this year. All right, so this one here is considering appointment citizens to various committees and commissions. So this one here, that's a long one, but I'm just going to kind of go through briefly. We have different committees, Budget Committee, Landmarks, Air Quality Commission. These are all different committees, citizens sit abroad and try to help us go through so that way we're not doing everything. Plus then also citizens could be part of, be part of us and help us out and keep moving through. So I will move through this pretty quickly. The first one will be the Air Quality Commission. With that one, looks like there was two applications and there's two open positions. So I move that Peter Donovan and Marie DeLoye be appointed to the Air Quality Commission each for a three-year term, which will expire December 31st, 2026. We have a second. We've had a motion in a second, do we need any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, our next one will be for the Arts Committee. Looks like we have two applications and three vacancies, so if you know anybody that would like to join the Arts Commission, there is still going to be one vacancy after we're done this evening. I move that Nicholas Abalon and Taylor Scroggins be appointed to the Arts Commission each for a three-year term, which will expire December 31st, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, do we need any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, one of the ones that I think is a very important committee would be the Budget Committee. On this one here, we do have three open positions, but we had four applicants, so that's actually really positive in my eyes because that means people are wanting to be part of our community and volunteer their time. It's better than trying to find people to fill, so. With that, I move that Megan Keating and Roxy So with that, I move that Megan Keating and Roxy Ogilvy be appointed to the Budget Committee for each for a three-year term, which will expire December 31st, 2026, and that Tony Smith be appointed for a two-year term, which will expire on December 31st, 2025. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. All right. So this one will be for the Community Landscape and Forest Commission. Looks like we have two vacancies and two applicants. I move that Tony Smith and Leah Spengel. Thank you. Be appointed to the Community Landscape and Forestry Commission each for a three-year term, which will expire December 31st, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are on to the Landmarks Advisory Commission. Looks like we have two vacancies and two terms. So I move, oh wait.
Justin.
I'm wrong on that, I'm sorry.
You should have the voting.
Yes, we do. It just says on here, it says two vacancies, and then it says?
So you have two vacancies, but per our resolution 4752, an individual appointed as a member of the Landmarks Advisory Commission shall be a resident of the city or a property owner within the historic district of the City of LaGrande, Oregon, except that two such members may be residents of Union County. At this time, there is one spot open for a member outside of city limits. Since both applicants live outside city limits, only one applicant can be appointed to this commission at this time. So you're only going to fill one position.
Perfect. Thank you for clearing me up on that one. All right, and we have voted. So basically before this meeting, all the counselors filled out a sheet when we do have multiple citizens applying. And so that way I tallied them up, so we do have the majority of the votes is the person that I am putting in this position, making sure that it's fair to all the different citizens. With that, I move that Casey Hibbert be appointed to the Landmarks Advisory Commission for a three-year term, which will expire on December 31st, 2026.
Second.
We've had a motion in a second. Any more counselor discussion? Nope. And with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nope. And looks like we have the library. Three vacancies, two applications. So once again, if there's anybody would like to volunteer their time and be part of this, please don't hesitate, come and join the group. With that, I move that Brenda Lloyd and Ryan Sastro be appointed to the Library Advisory Commission for each of a four-year term, which will expire December 31st, 2027. Second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Nope. All right, we're moving on to Parking, Traffic, and Safety and Street Maintenance Advisory Commission. Looks like we have two vacancies with two applications. I move that Mike Greenlee and Rod, Rodney Sands be appointed to the Parking and Traffic Safety and Street Maintenance Advisory Commission each for a three-year term, which will expire on December 31st, 2026. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So it looks like we have one left, Planning Commission. Looks like one vacancy, which is very good. That's another very important commission. I move that Max Koltiv be appointed to the Planning Commission for a four-year term, which will expire on December 31st, 2027. We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And we are done. With that part at least. All right, staff comments. I see a lot of you out there.
I started talking. I only have two things, two quick real things. Air Quality Network. So if you remember, we had a project where we were working with DEQ about establishing a local air quality network. They rely, they're up on the webpage, and we soon have an app coming out. So there will be an app that actually joins all the air stations in the state of Oregon that were hosted by the company that we had construct these air quality stations. So we worked with the DEQ lab to have a, a company that built these to last longer than, and be a lot cheaper than any of the other air quality monitoring stations. So I will get an email out that will lead you to our webpage, which will direct you to the webpage, but also give you an idea of the timeline for when the app comes out. It's also linked to ODOT's traffic cams, it's linked to fires in the area, it's linked to wind direction. So if you were interested in where the smoke was intruding from, you can actually go into the app and see where it is. The other one is, is we've been working with Union County on the mass text notifications that we were working on for the snow plowing. They actually found us an option that was free for now. So we now have one. It'll go up on our webpage on how you subscribe. There'll be three different areas you can subscribe to. There'll be snow removal, leaf removal, which we'll be focusing on the sweeper movements through the city, and the final one will be road closure. So you will just text certain hashtags to a certain number that'll qualify you for these, and then whenever we send out a text for any of those events, you'll get it on your phone. So we'll have that out to you probably in the next two weeks. So, all right. That's all for today.
Thank you, Kyle. Any other staff would like their opportunity to speak? City Manager comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Happy New Year. Just one quick note. So we did request an extension to the submission for the city's audit, and once that's completed, well submitted, we have scheduled the work session to present the audit to the council for January 29th. So kind of everyone, members of the audit team. Ballroom.
We also have our retreat coming up as well, don't we, Robert?
We do have our retreat coming up. That is on the 22nd and 23rd. I'm glad you mentioned that, Mayor. I am working on the topic list. I think everything that was submitted by counselors and staff is pretty easy to kind of pull in there. So for those that actually submitted, for those that did not, those off topics will not be on the retreat. Either one, no matter who she is or what she wants.
No, there's just the way it is. Just the deadline.
Is when?
No, 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 no.
When's the deadline?
It was the 15th of December.
We were right through it.
I did, I sure did.
Robert, will there be snacks?
There will be snacks. We do not know what said snacks will be, but it'll be as we did last year. We will do two nights, one on city issues, one on economic development.
So you're still taking input on the snacks?
Whether we are or not, aren't you getting us for important topics of discussion?
That's as important as the topic.
It's a long night. It matters.
I keep expecting further to be a motion that there be a committee assignment for the council to be the treat officer, most likely have for.
I so moved. I suck at it.
So I, I hope to get the draft out next week so you can kind of see what's expected.
Can I still get mine in?
Depends. Lots of work to you.
You always have that evening.
Thank you.
You got that evening.
Oh, no, we don't add topics. That's the rule, Mayor.
I, I will get it in tomorrow.
I am not saying that. I'm staying out of this one.
No.
All right. Is that all for you, Mr. Robert?
That's it.
Perfect. City Councilor comments?
I just wanted to express the, the thanks for everybody for the ball drop. It was, it was the biggest we've had. Unfortunately, there were some issues, and I would like to address those issues that I just found out about tonight because I wasn't down at all of it. There were fireworks going off downtown on Adams, rockets being shot off, I guess. And so that's going to, and I know that it was put to a stop as soon as they discovered it, but it happened. And so I just wanted you to know that Main Street is aware of it, and it won't happen again, hopefully, because it was put to a stop. But there is something else I learned tonight that when somebody was up on the roof of the building getting ready for the ball drop, they happened to see some kids over on another building across the street down there shooting off fireworks. And of course, they couldn't do anything about that, but I just wanted to let everyone know that. And so maybe next year, we might have to get some police officers down there. Unfortunately, this is the first year apparently there's been any issue like that. So, and the garbage cans were overfull because one of our people were supposed to put out garbage cans, and apparently they didn't put them out. That's why that was happening. I just found that all out tonight at a meeting I was at before this one. So I just want to apologize to the city for that. That's all. But it was a great evening. I, I understand. I mean, I was down there for a short time, but I didn't see any of that. And it was, there was, like I said, there was, I don't think, I think this was the largest participation. Kids were dancing in the street and they had a great time.
That's good.
You've gone wild.
Gone wild.
It, it was, the temperature, I think, had a lot.
I think so too. Yeah, it's the first year it's been that warm.
But it was, I saw pictures.
I think every other year has been under 10. So this warm temperature brought people out.
All right, any other counselors would like to speak? I would just like to say, now it's my turn. Happy New Year to everybody. Thank you for coming this evening. We did get a couple Christmas cards. I know it's late, but I just want to say thank you for all that, and that's to the council, not just to me, it's to all of us. So maybe Stacy can put that up in our little cubby area so that way everybody gets to see them. But thank you. And with that, I am going to adjourn this meeting, and then we will re-adjourn as the agency. Do you need any time, Brent, to switch over? Oh. All right. I would like to call the order. Could we have a real call, Stacy?
Justin Rock?
Here.
David Glabes?
Here.
Corinne Dudo is absent, excuse. Nicole Howard?
Here.
Molly King?
Here.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Here.
Denise Wheeler is absent, excuse.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. We did do a revised agenda. We had contemplated doing the Third Amendment to the Marketplace Family Food Agreement. There were some language changes that we discovered late that we needed to get resolved before we could bring that to the agency, and we didn't want to rush it through. So we, we went ahead and pulled that from the agenda, and the hope is that that will be for you in February. So you do have a copy of the revised agenda on the dais, I believe.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Looks like we just have the minutes or the only thing in there?
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This portion will be for public comment for the Urban Renewal Agency. Any items that are not on the agenda, this would be the time to speak to the agency. Is there anybody that would like to address the agency? Nope. All right. Public hearings are none unfinished business. There is none new business. Looks like we are considering a rescinding lot sale at the LaGrande Business Park and Technology Park. Staff report on this one, please.
Revised agenda, we, 7A was removed, so now 7B is 7A.
Oh, okay.
Nicole looking on her laptop.
Oh, I'm sorry. 7B.
I think this is.
Is that the right one?
Yeah, it should be 7B in your packet. Consider rescinding lot sale at Grand Business Park. Thank you, Mayor, members of the agency. The CCNRs for the business park have construction timelines for building out the properties as they're sold, and we had one sale that was done, and the property owner that acquired it has been unable to get to the point where they can in fact move forward to complete the project. And so the CCNRs contemplate a rescission of the sale. We actually did this back in '08, '09, where we had sold three lots, and then one of them indicated that they couldn't comply, and so the agency reacquired that lot. This is, I think, in the best interest of the parties. We will, once we close on this, we'll relist the property for sale. And the, the other avenue that is available would be to file an action for specific performance to force them to build the project, which I don't think is something that the agency would support, and certainly not something I would recommend. And so it does require approval of the agency for me to move forward to do that. In your packet, you have a copy of the letter that we sent to the owner that explains how the purchase price will be determined, and with your approval, we'll go ahead and make this happen. That's all I have. Questions?
How many lots do we have open now to sell? Still to sell, okay.
Thank you, Robert.
And this one we're selling for, what, $50,000? Okay.
Thank you, Robert.
Welcome.
At this time, we would like to, uh, public comments. Does anybody wish to speak on this matter? Nope. Any more agency discussion? A motion?
I move that the, the district manager be authorized to complete and sign all necessary documents to rescind the sale of Lot 4 at the LaGrande Business and Technology Park as presented.
We have a motion in a second. Any more agency discussion on this matter? No. With that, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
Nope, we are good. All right, District Manager comment?
Just to make you aware that one of the things that occurs on an annual basis is the Urban renewal agency is required to do a report out, and we have historically used Elaine Howard firm to do that. She's the same person that we've had provide training. They're doing that again for us this year, so that will be going out. And we're also going to be meeting with the ERAC to look at some proposed revisions to the call for projects policy. You'll recall that as we do every year at the conclusion of that, we ask for some guidance from the agents in the ERAC on any changes. So we're going to be meeting with them, and so we'll be bringing a proposal back to the agency on some potential revisions to the call for projects policy when those are finalized. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, there was going to be done when again this year? Do you know?
We are scheduled to do that later this month, so it should be.
But when will the call for projects be initiated?
Typically, we try to, we vote in for applications beginning the first week of March.
Okay.
And we accept applications through the week of the Friday before Memorial Day, and then we have a motion for staff to do the renovations of the council. And then we have a motion for staff to do the notices. We have a special meeting in July. We're just putting together the final calendar yet. So we'll use that back to you soon.
Okay. Because I've had somebody ask me about when this is going to go out. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, the special meeting is in, on, looks like it's tentative, July 8.
All right. Any more agency member comments? With that, before you leave, please see Stacy. She has quite a few things that we have to sign, so nobody run out of here really quick. And with that, we are adjourned.